Recommendation, but I'm just using this as an example. So a Bell's Bond company, you know, would theoretically fit into an office use, okay? So that's kind of like along the lines of what we're talking about. Does that make sense now?
Yeah, which, yeah, I think that came to our commission like last, last spring, I believe, so.
Okay. So again, that's something because it provides goods and services to surrounding residents, it could fall into the office, could actually fall into B one and B two.
Very good, and ultimately all this would go to council.
Correct.
No matter what we recommend, they'll have the final say on this.
Correct. So, so again, things to consider is light, pollution, noise, those, those kind of factors, right? The other thing is that this, what your task was won't be due probably till January because, depending on what we decide for November, December in our meeting, but we're likely bringing this back in January. And to your point, you'll make those recommendations, we'll tally that up, present that to council, and ultimately they make the decision whether or not to do it.
Are you going to give us the materials that the city feels we need in order to take in? Or are you, you're going to rely on us just going to the city website and look?
So if you look at your packet?
Yeah.
I provided you with regulations for each zone, and I provided you with the permitted use table. So basically you'll just kind of read, hey, this is what the office district entails. Are these, are these scheduled uses compatible with it?
And so if you need a printed, if you need a printed version, if you prefer to go through it, just let us know, we'll print you that out for you. We can get up with the receptionist if you'd like to hand go through it. Some people feel comfortable or have the ability to do it, you know, make notes and comments in the system, that's completely up to you. So it's up to you how you want to handle that. We can, again, we can print your packet, you can make your notes on there, and then you can turn, you can come prepared to the next, to the next meeting or whenever you decide to discuss it. Normally the zoning commission when we're making these kinds of changes are done over a couple of meetings.
Sure.
Right away. And so, you know, you hold a meeting in November, you're going to have to look at your schedule next, it's a week in Thanksgiving. So you may want to cancel the November meeting or have it early, or, or kind of come to the first maybe of-
December.
A December meeting, but you're going to have to do it.
Consolidated there.
Yeah. And so depending on how much time you need to go through it, I'm going to do the same thing with council right now. We're looking at the sustainable of the PDD version of, of it. And so the way I do it with them is I gave them some recommended changes, kind of what he kind of did right now, and then they'll give me, they're going to email me their changes, and I'm going to put them in a spreadsheet, and so it'll have a conversation at that council meeting. So y'all can also do it that way. But normally the way the zoning commission has handled it in the past is, y'all go through it, and then some people aren't going to have any changes. Some people will, and say, we'd like this removed, or this taken out of B two, or everything looks fine, we accept your recommended changes, I don't have any concerns with anything, maybe one or two changes, and then we move on and we take the changes to council. So that's basically how the process somebody does.
I, I know it's not probably a big deal for us, but just, maybe if we can have it directly emailed, just that, it, it's a PDF file in Acrobat, the, the whole packet, or-
We can also send it in Word if you feel comfortable.
You mean for editing, say?
Yeah, we're going to do it, but some people, so I will tell you, I mean, even me, I will print out stuff and, you know, scratch through it, just to, you know, just really quickly before I go in and make it. Depending on how much information there is. And so you may, you may want a printed version, just, I mean, not all the time, but this in particular may be easier for y'all to review in a written form, printed form. So we can do that, and you can pick it up anytime with Jennifer, and then, you know.
Do, as, as a body, do we want to request whether we want it printed out? I mean, I guess individually, like, I, I'm fine with it in PDF form and, and marking it up. I don't know if Mr. Yornel or Mr. Diaz, or any of you guys want it printed out, but-
Chairman, can I speak?
Yeah.
I'm, I agree, I'm, I'm with you. As long as I can get it in PDF form, email to us.
So maybe, yeah, maybe email that and print it out.
I'm good.
Yornel, how do you feel about that? Would you prefer it printed?
Are you going to give, send us, are you talking about something different than what we have today's packet?
No, sir.
They already have it.
Yes, you just got yours printed, because you're, you're one of the only that get a packet printed. Actually, you're the only one.
There's one other.
Pat, yeah.
Oh, yeah, Pat, that's right.
Can I ask a question?
How many pages is that, is that, is that very obscure now?
Thirty-six.
Okay, it's not, not as bad as I thought.
What page?
I'm just wondering how many pages are in, in the packet there that, that retains that.
Thirty-six, yeah. On page nineteen, you have some markouts.
Yes.
Ours, mine, this is black and white. Okay. It says, uh, commercial and address overlay is marked out, and then we go on down, and-
So you no longer, you no longer have, the reason those are marked out is because you no longer have them. You've gotten rid of the commercial overlay.
So we don't consider this at all, then?
Well, what do you mean?
Well, if it's already marked out, we don't have to consider it, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Correct.
It's already deleted.
It's already deleted.
Right, so anything that's not marked out, any changes you want to make to the non-marked-out version of the packet is what we're asked.
Is that based on state law? Is it, are those the things-
Oh, we combined them, is what we, some of it was state law, but we combined it to make it easier for the developers that were versus having two separate, basically manuals for developer, you have to go here, and find underlines.
Real pain. Okay. All right, very good.
So originally we all received a packet like this, and that section was in there, but you just mentioned it's been upgraded now. So we need to get the newer one and go from there, is that correct?
Uh, so it's not necessarily that it's been updated, we just did markouts to what we'll no longer, because we got to take this all back to council.
Okay.
They, they've already deleted it, but they haven't deleted it from this section of the code.
Okay, this has markouts too, this has like red and, and blue and all that, yeah, okay.
You, you mean when you first came on as, as a commission member, you're here?
So then, yes, that's probably the newest version of it.
This is the newest version.
Probably, but I feel more comfortable making sure that you have the right one there.
Okay, all right. And then my second question is, do we review all of it, or do we want to divide and conquer?
Yeah, we'll be determined by you, Commissioner.
I would say divide and conquer, we can't handle this all in one, in one meeting, or maybe two meetings.
I mean, are you, so are you intending that, that we would individually take a portion of it? But then would, would we have to, would that be like a workshop that we would have to hash that out and?
No, you would take, you know, that you're going to have like, she's going to do pages one through-
Or A through C, or A to B, or whatever it is, because it's, it's all, I, I'm sitting here looking at it, and I'm going, oh my God, this is a lot. So that's why I, I question, do we want to divide and conquer, bring back the changes we want to make, discuss the changes you want to make, and then if everybody agrees, boom, next, next, next.
The other thing that's been done in the past, we did it with the Sign Code, is they just voted on two or three people as a subcommittee to go through it. So that's also happened, like Sign Code is a lot of work.
Which would mean separately to-
Which would mean separately, we don't post it, they get together, I was told wine and coffee or whatever at somebody's house, they go through it, they make the recommended changes. They bring those, that subcommittee then brings back those recommended changes to the zoning commission, and then y'all agree with the subcommittee, or y'all agree with the subcommittee, and then y'all, as an entire body, vote on those changes. You can do it that way as well.
Does Toma apply to those, to-
Subcommittees, no, because you don't do it, you don't do it in, the subcommittee should be less than a forum. So it's usually-
Like two or three?
I'm one or three.
I guess my, my only concern is what if we all go through it and we, we want to address something in a, in a portion that wasn't, you know, that we didn't take, but, you know, I don't know, we'd be here forever.
We'd come up with a discussion to be, you know.
Sure, yeah, well, that's true. I, well, and I'll say this, I know that's, that's actually the next agenda item, but I like the idea of maybe, and Thanksgiving is coming up pretty soon. So are you seeing anything on the horizon as far as agenda items that we would need to address in November?
Yes.
As far as city business beyond this, this issue with the-
A new case, yes, for the planning and zoning commission specifically.
And that, that couldn't hold off till like an early December meeting?
No, because they, they've already got the ball rolling, and so they'll, there's some deadlines that we need to meet.
Okay. All right, very good. Anything else?
Do we have a deadline for this? To accomplish this task?
So we're, we're looking at, you know, theoretically, we're looking at January, you know, due to the, the possibility that we may not have a December meeting. Again, that's not for sure, but, you know, in the event that that happens, you know, and then I think that November will be too soon, so we're looking at January.
Yeah.
Okay. That makes, that's good.
And if need be, I mean, if we had to extend it to February, I mean, are you seeing that being an issue, or are we upping it? Okay. All right.
When does this have to be back to council, is that, is there?
There's not, so I hate not to give you a deadline, because I did not give you a deadline on the sustainability overlay, and it took a year. So, I mean, again, my hope is for it to be in January, but if y'all are still hashing out some recommendation or some items, you can't get through it or what have you, then we're okay with continuing to push it back until y'all feel comfortable. I just don't want what happened with the sustainability overlay to happen again. And so I just want to make sure that we just stay on, on top of it. And when cases come, a lot of times we'll postpone that discussion, because we got to address the case and not really go through the code. So that could hap, that could happen in the future too. So the sooner the better, but January is the timeline we're shooting for. If we can't, then February is fine too, you know. Am I going to say faster?
I'm not making excuses for us, but I mean, entering in the holiday season with Thanksgiving.
Oh, absolutely.
I don't know how much time will, as a committee, be able to dedicate, you know, in our, our own personal lives, but I'm not saying we wouldn't be able to do that, but I'm wondering if it might be wiser to set like a February-
I think it should shoot for January, for the next two in January.
So that would be, so you're still at three months out, right? So even though you've got Thanksgiving coming up, Thanksgiving isn't till like three weeks away, then you have Thanksgiving week, and then you get three weeks in this. It's not like we shut down from the last week of November till January. The, I mean, the city's still got business and stuff like that, we got to, we got to deal with this. Um, so the November, I would love if y'all want to shoot for a shutting down experience in there. So, but now, uh, the, y'all do, y'all will probably have a case in November, and so I know that that's the next discussion, but y'all have a case in November. I don't know if y'all have a case in December, so you'll probably cancel the meeting in December. Um, and then January comes, like, that's three weeks before your meeting in January, so.
Yeah. Just out of curiosity, I'm, I'm, is that case, is that a pretty involved case, or is it pretty just typical?
I guess.
Um, yeah. Uh, no, I, I don't know.
You don't think it's one of those items that we would sit here and spend an hour on necessarily, or you're not foreseeing that? Okay.
No.
Okay. All right, um, all right, any other comments, questions?
I said that, now y'all just threw an hour.
Yeah.
Yeah. I'm not an expert at some of this, or hardly any of it, so if we need assistance, we come to you for-
No, you Google to Google. Chat GPT, no.
Yes.
Yeah, no, 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 if you, if you do have any questions or need clarity on anything, yes, Michael or Oliver.
Yeah, you're open to us even coming up and setting up a, a meeting with her, okay.
Well, when we weren't, when we created this overlay, it took us a year.
I remember.
Well, you weren't here, you weren't the manager then.
I know, but I was still here.
Yeah.
And highly involved. Um, no, I mean-
What year was that?
Uh, the sustainability overlay, Chris did-
Two thousand and ten or something?
No, Chris did it in, um, no.
Ten, five?
No, fourteen was the year this year.
Oh, interesting, wow.
I wasn't, it was before that, when we created it originally.
Yeah, the sustainability, that came out of the AIA study, the institute. So that would have been, I'm telling you, I mean, that's what, I mean, it came out of that whole workshop. So it would have been, it would have been after two thousand and ten, because two thousand and ten is when Lenny Never was here. So it came after that, sometime after that. I, I have a timeline in my head with the city manager. So, anyway, but my, the point to all of this is, I just need to know how you want the process to go, or not me, Michael or Lenny, just know how the process is going to go. And I'm kind of confident as being, sorry, Michael. Uh, I, we just need to know how you want to move forward with doing it. You're going to do a subcommittee, y'all individually want to go home and make your own, and then you're going to come back in November, December, or January, whenever y'all are going to come back. Do you want to do as Ms. Crower suggested and split it up into sections?
Well, you know what I would suggest, I don't know if you guys are, are against this, why don't we take it home and look at it individually, go through it and see, see what catches our eye? I mean, there might be portions, and then, and then if we're okay with the idea of splitting it up, I think we'd still have time, right, after, after the, the November meeting to, if we decide to tackle it as a, you know, separate portions of it individually, yeah.
I'm kind of clinging with Ms. Crower, because if we all go home with this and try to tackle it, we're all going to have questions to come to him.
That's a good point.
And, you know, he's going to make, so why don't we take the, however many pages it is divided by the number of people we have on the dais, and everybody gets a chunk, and you don't have to worry about the nine pages you don't have.
So it's thirty-one, thirty-six pages?
So the uses are actually eighteen pages.
Oh, just, just the stack tree.
The whole package is-
Do you want to, let's see, so what do we, like, three pages apiece, basically, what would that be?
So we discussed already the PDF of exactly what we needed to focus on would be emailed out, right?
Yep.
Okay. So, and you said that's going to be about eighteen pages?
So it'll be eighteen pages of permitted use table, and then you'll have maybe three or four pages where it gives you the definitions of each district. So you're going to focus on the purpose of that and compare it to this permitted use table and see if it's still an appropriate use.
Relation twenty-five. Do you want to, you want to sign, like, pages from, from there, you, since you have it physically in front of you?
Well, you know, they're saying eighteen pages, but I, I haven't, so you're not getting any less. So what I may recommend is you see this table, if it's in a table format, you're going to have a number of lines. You then take the number of lines divided by how many people, and then you get it.
Right, so like, B two, the definition and purpose for B two is a longer, it's taking up, so you're looking at it from definite, all you're, all you're really focusing on is whether or not you want to make changes to the permitted use table. The other documents as part of the permitted use table is just the definition for what it is.
Two words.
It's a key, so you understand what B two is and kind of the goal of what you want in B two. You're not making really changes to the definition and the purpose to B two, you're making changes to the permitted use table.
So maybe, do we have any volunteers if we break it down to a subcommittee of maybe two?
I do think a subcommittee would be a worthwhile thing for this depth of task. You know, certainly an opportunity for us to independently review on our own to the depth that we are able, but then, yes, the subcommittee and then the board committee.
Do you want to volunteer for it?
I might.
Well, like, so, so, you take a look at your screen, you're, the permitted use table is this, right? So what he's asking- So what he's asking you to do is to review the permitted use table and see if there's anything that you don't want in certain sections. Like if you didn't want adult care in, you know, in B two anymore. You want, and, and, you know, you just didn't want it there anymore. Your recommendation was to remove it from B two, and you just wanted to keep it in B three and I one or something. Then you would make those recommendations, and we would take it to council. And I would get the attorneys, I think the attorneys are going to have to review all of our changes anyway, and make sure that there's no spots I'm making in anyway. So, again, that, that's, that's one way to look at it. So that's what you're doing, is going through each of these uses and making any changes to the permitted use table. The other stuff that, before that, explains to you what is I one, what's the purpose of I one. And so you're not really making any changes in this stuff, I mean, maybe you may have, there's a word or something you don't like, if you want to make a change in that recommendation, we can look into that. But you're really just making a change to this. So if you want to move B two as permitted, you're going to come look up here, well, what is B two? You may not know. So this is all of B two, see how that's really long? So I can't say I'm breaking this up, you get three pages, you get two pages, you may only have one use, but you may have five uses if we do it by trying to count pages. So you're, we're trying to look at it from a permitted view of the table portion. And so we could say, I can go through and count how many lines and divide that by eight, and you take, you're going to take the first eight uses, and you're going to take the next eight, and then, we can do it that way. I don't know how many lines are there. But we, we could do it that way. We could have staff breaking up by everybody that's here and say, hey, you're taking the, the first section, you're taking second, we can do that too. So however y'all want to handle it is fine. I, so when y'all say it looks like a lot of work, I don't, I don't see it as a lot of work, because you're just going through this chart and saying, does it really belong in that, those sections? Like, so you're not reviewing all of this up here, that's not what we're asking you to do. We're asking you to review whether or not that the uses belong in the zones that they're currently in, right?
Correct. And realistically, I mean, some of you may have, some of you may have no change or recommendation.
Yeah, right.
Can, can you scroll down to the Bs? Let's just go back up to the Bs. I believe you did add the Bale Bond facility, that wasn't in the section that is here, you gave that example.
It's right there.
Yes, and what I'm saying is, don't go by this.
Oh, yeah.
Because Bale Bond is not in here.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. We do need, we do need the new one. We do need the new one then, the new PDF.
You're seeing a discrepancy, yeah.
So what she was given, so that's why I said I, I do want to make sure you have the most updated version. So the Bell Bonds is in here, it's not in her file that she got when she became a commissioner.
A year and a half ago.
So would, would staff have an, have an issue with, with divvying this up?
I don't, I don't mind, I mean, again, we'll just count the lines, and then the people that are here, okay, I mean, we can certainly do that, if that's what you want us to do. We can send out an email with the, you know, with the attached sections if you want.
Mr. Perry, do you have anything you want to add?
I just think we're going to have a November meeting, and they're going to send this out. I think we all should, you know, accept the responsibility to take a, a look at the entire packet. And then we can make some decisions about how to break it up at the November meeting. That's, that's how I think about it.
You can do that too.
Yeah. I think originally, I suggest, I think, I think we'll still have time, and since we're not up against a hard, I know we're shooting for January, right?
Correct.
Maybe that, that's probably the best way to go about it at this point. If I think, I think-
Because I think once you start studying the chart, you're going to realize-
It's not.
And, and it's not, it looks like a lot, but like, and I know that there's some people, I have some, I may have, I have staff that are what I call working groups, right, that start rocking full diving, so, I, I think it's your, your-
Yeah, my minds are pretty hot. So.
So, so, but I think as you get in the, I've reviewed the uses many, many times over the years. And so as you start going through all the uses, you, you start getting a flow of like, okay, well, you know, you're not going to deal with retail, like, some of the stuff you're just going to know, you're retailing B two, yeah, okay, and you're going to move quickly. Now, there's some you're going to be like, what is that? And you're going to have to call us or Google it, or, or what have you, because even me sometimes am like, what's the difference between warehouse or outdoor storage, or what's this? Like, there are some that seem similar in nature, and so you may have questions on that, what the differences are. I still get questions, I still ask questions on some stuff that sounds familiar, or it sounds like they belong together. So, again, it's kind of one of those things. You may think of a use you don't see, that could also come up, and you may want to add a use in here that you don't see.
If, if now, between now and November is our independent review month, then I think we'll have a good sense of depth beyond that. And if December is possibly not going to happen, this meeting, maybe that's a good subcommittee month.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, if need be, yeah.
I have a question. This table, is it available in Microsoft Excel? This is a Word document.
It's a Word, it's the way, it's the way our system is, it's in a Word media.
Okay. Because for me, it would-
We could get ex-councilman Bradshaw to format it for Excel, probably pretty easily.
No, 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 I, if, this is in electronic format, not a PDF, no, I can convert PDF to Word. I, I'd like to take this, move it into Excel, because I can see myself more easily, more readily analyzing this table if I could sort.
So you're willing to do that?
More.
Are you, you're, you're going to do that for yourself, or?
For myself, oh, yeah, that, that one may pose a, pose a challenge on others.
I can see where that, yeah, that would come in handy, right? You want to share that with us if you end up doing it?
I can do it, yeah.
Okay, very good. Are you guys okay with what Mr. Perry just brought up? We move forward in that manner at this point?
So let's, let's, be sure we understand what we're doing here. Explain what, what it is we're doing.
Say that again.
So we're going to get an email with an eighteen-page document. And we're going to spend the time between this meeting and the November meeting reviewing the entire document. And then when we come to the November meeting, we'll make a decision, or decisions about a subcommittee, or how we're going to break it up. But that way we at least have had the opportunity to spend time with it, knowing what the task is, and looking at it with a different set of eyes. And, and, and there's, there's a little resistance to this at the moment, because we're not really familiar with it all. And we get past that resistance when we spend time with it. So we commit to spending time with it over the next month until the November meeting.
I think that's what Crystal was trying to convey, that it's not as, probably monumental task as, as we're thinking at this point. I think because what we did, the, what did we do? What was the last thing we addressed? The, um, the PDDs, right? And that, that took us a long time, probably just because we kept kind of pushing it off. But it seemed a bit of an intimidating task, and I don't see this being as big of an issue.
Okay, when we say we, are we including all the, the two alternates that we still have? Are we, because they might be coming up and be brought up to the desk.
So all of the members get, anytime we mail out one thing to one member, everybody gets it. Includes the alternates and the people on the board. Because next, in November, Mr. Hernandez may not be sitting on the dais. It may be, Pat may be back, I don't, I don't know, right? So, but yes, we will explain to the people that were not here this evening that it is that the zoning commission's decision to have everybody take an independent review and provide any feedback at the November meeting, and so we'll, we'll send that out.
And including the alternates, right?
Yes, the alternates and the members.
Even if we're not sitting in on the dais, they would, they would-
Everybody that is part of this commission will get an email and the-
Yeah, just like today where we, we ended up having two, two alternates filling spots. We, we might be in a situation, especially as we get, because of our holidays, where all, all three, or all two alternates at this point would have to fill.
Everybody gets everything.
And, and where are we at with filling, so we have two alternates at this point, I know this is off topic, but, so we looking at replenishing alternates with Mr. Yornel having moved up as well?
Okay, three would-
Yeah, that'll be on, okay. All right, very good. So you guys feeling comfortable on this at this point?
Perry, I just want to clarify something. The, uh, divide and conquer, I was under the impression we had to have it done by November, so that's why I was like, whoa.
No, no, no.
As soon as I heard, you know, we're going to go to possibly January.
Yeah, January.
Okay.
Yeah, but I think, I think we'd be good.
Yeah, with the holidays and all that, I think we'll be good.
Okay. Now, all, all I can say is just request sending everyone the, uh, the PDF file of this, and if, if anyone wants this printed out, maybe say now, I, you already have it.
I don't need one, I already have it.
Yeah. Yeah, right, right. But you, you can refer to that and, and the PDF and figure out what, what retains, yeah, okay. All right, very good. Okay, so we'll move on to, there's no action there, so move on to number three under new business, discussion and possible action on selecting alternate meeting dates for November and December, or for cancellation of meetings. All right. Comments, I guess, we should deal with November here. I'm thinking that, um, gosh, I know it'd be coming up really soon, we're, we're on the twenty-eighth.
So we look at the nineteenth, twenty, twenty-one, that's kind of recommended.
I, I know. Is the eleventh too early? I mean, is that, would that be an issue step to our leave? And do you guys feel like two weeks gives us enough time to, to look at this, or would you like more time?
Chairman, just to let you know, I believe November, eleven is better.
Veterans Day?
Oh, it is Veterans Day.
So...
Is there, there's ceremonies, um...
We're closed.
I know they're normally daytime ceremonies, I don't have to disrespect, oh, you...
It's, it's closed, yeah, it's federal holiday, yeah. So that's why I wanted to, when you said the eleventh, Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to mention that it was a holiday.
I appreciate that.
I, I am out of town, you wanna come back to Wednesday?
And there's no issue with, with Wednesday meetings if need be, right? From, from staff, do you, I mean, because I don't think we have any other choices, right?
No, I mean, I mean, he's recommending the nineteenth, twentieth, and twenty-first.
Oh, I see that, sorry, I'm looking up there and it's washed down, I see.
And so, um, so I mean, if, if, if there's a date, so like if the nineteenth is good with y'all, with, you know, that's the, we try to get it as close to your regular meeting date as possible, um, I'm trying to avoid the Thanksgiving week in general.
The closer we get to that Friday of the twenty-first, things, things get pretty crazy, people are already heading out of town.
Mr. Chairman, I, I recommend the nineteenth, because as you start getting closer to the twenty and twenty-first, people will start, I'm off all the week of twenty-fourth to the twenty-eighth, I'm out of town. But people start doing Friday the twenty-first for Thanksgiving, so I would recommend that we meet November the nineteenth.
Yeah, I'm heading out of town Friday morning. So I, I'm, I'm good with the nineteenth, is it, do we need to take a vote on that, or...
Yeah, I would.
Okay, okay.
I'll say it.
I'll say it, you can move, okay, all right, that was, now, all right, uh, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Any nays? Ayes have it? Very good, so for, uh, December? What are...
I'm trying to be hopeful, I'm, this is messy. So my recommendation of what y'all have done in December in the past, y'all don't meet unless you have a case. So if you have...
How's that looking?
So right now, it's kind of pending, I can't really say definitely.
So I just need to know what date works for everybody, just in case. But we will cancel it once we know, and we, we should know within the next three weeks or so, whether or not that's gonna go through.
And school, school gets out that, um, Friday the nineteenth, yeah? Geez, man, um, I don't know, Mr. Chairman?
Seventeenth?
Seventeenth, probably, or the tenth? Yeah. How, is that too late for anyone?
Yeah, I was gonna recommend December the tenth. Because, as, as for me...
Yeah, things, things get a little hairy that week, right, leaving up to...
My last day of work is the eighteenth, and I'm out of town the nineteenth all the way through, I don't go back to work until the fifth of January, so I'm gone. As of the nineteenth, but I'm prepping to leave by at least the seventeenth or eighteen, so I won't be here.
And there's probably a good chance we would probably not have this meeting, I just haven't been on this commission for a while. So I guess this is like an emergency backup thing, so, anyone have an issue with the tenth, or, or the ninth? If, with the ninth, conflict with any other meetings here at, at City Hall, or...
Because normally a lot of the other meetings, with the exception of council meetings, everything else is... Y'all are just, because you're statutory, something comes up and we have timelines, we have to meet, then that's the only reason we call a meeting in December.
You, you guys okay with the ninth?
Yeah. Or the tenth, yeah.
May or can't.
Y'all, y'all have a preference for that Wednesday or Tuesday of that week?
Well, Tuesday would be a regular, when we, we, normally, we go on Tuesdays.
Normally, we go on Tuesdays, so stick to that?
Kinda, in the night, but then...
So let's put the ninth as, as our...
Make the motion for the ninth.
Okay, go ahead.
So make the motion, we meet in December on the ninth.
Second.
Okay, very good. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any nays?
And then we will keep you posted if that meeting holds.
Okay, okay, very good. All right, um, and there wasn't any reason to open any of this up to the public, right? We, we, yeah, okay, very good, just wanted to make sure. Okay, so, um, with that, I'll adjourn our meeting, my meeting, zoning, at seven twenty-one PM. All right, thank you.